All right, it's 6:00 PM. Uh, first thing on our agenda tonight, we do need to call the order of a public hearing on an ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year, commencing on the first day of May, 2024, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2025. If anybody would like to present evidence or testimony regarding the proposed appropriations ordinance. There are none, we will close the public hearing.
Hey Dave, I'm gonna read that memo really quick, that Pat wanted me to read about the budget.
She did some changes.
Just a, just a major...
We're not voting yet. We'll come back.
Oh, you're not even out of the vote? That's fine, yes.
Okay. Now we'll call the regular village board meeting in order. If you'd all please join me in a moment of silence. You have pledged allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pla, could you take the roll?
Trusty nice president.
Trusty tribe.
Here.
Trusty Ferguson.
President.
Trusty Charo.
President.
Trusty Gerger.
Here.
Trusty Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kimble.
President.
Are there any public announcements?
Les Morgan with the, uh... Chatham American Legion and VFW. Legion doesn't have anything going on right now, but they go next month while updating on all the upcoming events on that. With the VFW, um, we're having on May 4th, a food drive from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. We're collecting, uh, food and water for the, uh, food pantry. Then, May the 11th is supposed to clean up. The posts will be closed, but if you wanna stop by and help clear, clean things up, you're more than welcome to do that. And then on May 31st is music bingo. That's all I have, thank you.
Are there any public comments on agenda topics?
You got one more, sir.
You wanna talk about the permit? We got you. Uh, next time, Chief, will we?
Thank you, Eric. So thanks everyone, uh, for, uh, coming out this evening, uh, thanks, uh, to the village board as well. Um, sound often that we get to, uh, to recognize one of our employees, uh, one of our employees, which is up and coming, is Scott Williams. Um, Scott Williams has been with our department for over, uh, 21 years and four months. Um, he's been quite an accomplishment. I'm sure he has, uh, many stories to share, but we just don't have the time to really share them. So I'll make it short and sweet, but, uh, you know, we would definitely miss Scott. He's definitely, he's done a lot for this department. Um, you know, as he, as he wrote his retirement, uh, uh, to me and, uh, and kind of put on the fact is that we're kind of the last three, and when I say the last three, it'd be myself and, and Scott and, uh, DC Charter here, so the guy's over 20 years of service, uh, from the department, so it's quite an accomplishment for Scott. So I just wanna kind of hit on the highlights of Scott over, over the years, and like I said, these are definitely just strictly highlights. Um, you know, Scott, uh, he started his career, like I said, uh, um, let's see here, I apologize. January 6th of 2003 is when he started, uh, his career at Chatham Police Department. Prior to that, he had some, uh, previous law enforcement experience with, uh, working in the police department and some time with, uh, SBD as well, but Scott joined us, like I said, 21 years ago, four months ago, it's a day. Uh, some of the awards that he's received over the years, uh, that he's received, but he's also, one thing he's very proud of is the fact of the Sons of the American Revolution Award that he received in 2013, uh, one of the awards he had received. So throughout his career, like I said, he's, he's done a lot of major accomplishments and a lot of trainings went into, uh, for Scott as well. Some of the training that he's been certified in is one of is the only state police crime scene investigator class. So that's a six-week course and certified by the state of Illinois. A lot of time and effort, a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of homework and a lot of extra time that he had to spend with, to hunt some personal time to be able to accomplish that. So he can go anywhere in Illinois and be able to crash reconstruction, so there's something to be said about that. Another, uh, another specialty is he's also into the, um, the crash reconstruction specialist. So the, the troopers you see here, the officers you see out on the road today with their, with, uh, the different instruments and stuff, Scott's able to be able to do that from, uh, from start to finish, and that's another specialty that, uh, you know, that, that he holds, which that's another six-week course. So there's been a lot of time and effort put into Scott and his career, and he's done a, he's done a great job with it. Uh, some other things, uh, lead death homicide investigator for our department, uh, field training officer, juvenile officer, crisis intervention team, uh, officer as well. Supervisor of evidence from 2009 to 2016, that's when we kind of started with the evidence room and had someone that basically charged him with nowhere to see him. And that's something he could definitely speak on, and that's something he takes great pride in, and it's something in his department that we're really gonna miss because he, he has the finite skills and he loves, he loves the, the evidence side of things, he's very meticulous. Um, you call him out to a crime scene to do things, it's kinda like, hey Scott, we need to go, we've been here four hours. It's a hard, it's a burden, it's hard. We've been here four hours. I know you've dusted for everything, but he's, but he's very meticulous and, and he can speak about that just briefly. Um, also, as I said, supervisor of evidence is also the proper evidence specialist since 2009 up till today, um, you know, the next few weeks when we turn over the reins to the roster with the heart department. And like I said, I can't say enough about that. Uh, he was also the unit president from 2016 to 2020. So, uh, with that, um, you know, without, uh, if you're not aware, Scott is obviously leaving us, but he's gonna continue his career with, uh, with the attorney general's office, where he'll be, uh, starting work there in about the third week of May, which my understanding is the special is gonna be, gonna be evidence side of things for the village. So, without further ado, Scott, if you'd like, come on up and I'd like to present an, an award for Scott on behalf of the police department in the village of Chatham. Scott Williams, in appreciation and recognition for your loyal service to the community and dedication to this department, best of luck in retirement, Chatham Police Department, January 3rd, 2003 to May 15th, 2024. Congratulations. So that's Scott kind of had the floor and, you know, your pileups.
Oh, there you go. It's, I'm gonna have to narrow it down here a little bit because five minutes isn't probably enough, I'm a cock. Do you know, it's, I remember back when I came, uh, to this village, um, there were a lot of license plate placards at that time that said, "Chatham, uh, where families come to grow." I still, still remember those a lot. It still is a statement that means a lot to me because when, when I moved here with my wife and kids, um, yeah, I was much younger, my kids were very small and went through the whole, you know, all their time in school in this community and, and just ultimately in 21 years became a part of this community. Um, this, this is something any good law enforcement officer will end up telling you. This, this isn't about me. Without, without all of this team here and my family over there, I wouldn't be here. I, I wouldn't be the person I am today, but, uh, and just the community in general. Uh, you know, it's, I have so many people to be thankful for in this community and I'm proud of it. I'm still gonna be part of this community. Um, I'm still continuing my law enforcement career. Um, you know, it's, um, I was definitely honored by, you know, what the chief ended up saying, you know, it's, I put a lot of time and effort into my career doing evidence. I, you know, one of my jokes is, I see dead people, you know, kind of from the, the old movie, and, but, but, you know, uh, yes, some of the younger crowd might not even know that. But, you know, but it's, it's one of those things that, that was part of my specialty too, is working those type of scenes. And I've had training through this department that, I mean, most departments aside don't have a certified accident reconstructions, um, they don't have a certified Illinois State Police Crime Scene Investigator. Um, I've been honored and privileged by this community and department to be sent to some very advanced trainings and, and I can't say thank you enough for that. Um, it's, it's, today's, it's, I don't know, it's a mixture. It's, it's definitely, um, it's nice to walk through another door in life, um, at the same time. It's, it's painful. The closer this gets to, to next Tuesday, you know, the harder it's, and so, I don't know. I mean, with that, I'll just put my resignation letter.
You won't let me, you gotta keep my back. They go together.
Does that fit on it?
It goes together.
Okay, maybe we'll have to change that, but, but no, I guess ultimately, um, there's, this wasn't just me here for 21 years because I couldn't have done this without everybody around. And I...
Thank you. Scott, we certainly appreciate all that you've done. Here in the family, we appreciate you letting him through all of the things that he's done for the village.
It's a hard transition to move forward myself, to be a family member.
I figured this was where everyone, mom...
But you know, you're stuck with us, we're still in the 11th, 76th, 80th.
That's what I told him last time. You've just been in town, you're not even in town.
Very quickly, I'd like to add what the chief said for my office. This is one of the best convenes, uh, one of the best people that were on the edge of our patch. The village has been very lucky to have him. We've been honored to work with him. His loss will be seen in the paper, all right? He is not replaceable. We will fill that loss. We'll fill his position. We won't fill his, go buddy rock to the village. So, thank you, Scott. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I know that I speak for all of us when I say that. You will be missed.
Now for Scott's family, you don't have to stay for the rest of the village board meeting. Of course, always welcome to, to hear the encore for what happens after we do a 21-year retirement, and obviously what we do is move immediately into our development plans.
Yeah, yeah, here's the Taco Bell, possibly coming here.
Thank you. So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and set up, and I'd like you to bring Craig.
Thank you.
Craig's with the Development Consortium. Craig, continue.
We've, we've been working with Craig and TDC, uh, a RISE grant that we were granted through the state of Illinois, through DCEO. Craig's been working, uh, a lot of interviews and a lot of...
Data sources, yeah.
...give us kind of an outline, I don't want to, I don't want to make it a long plan to satisfy all the terms of the RISE grant that we were awarded, so we would let Craig through the highlights of the eighty-seven page report.
Do I need a microphone? I don't know, do I? Tell me. I'm not sure.
You're good.
Okay. Thank you, first of all, um... That was cool. That's all I have to say. That was cool. And that's one of the things that's great about a town like this, and I hope you don't think that for granted. We deal with that. Excuse me, a lot of communities around the state, and it's not as personal as that, so kudos. First thing I'll do also is say, um, pardon my voice, I've been presenting stuff since about seven thirty this morning and haven't really shut up, so be real with me. And also, I want to apologize for delaying getting this report out to you. We had a series of things that happened late 2023, early 2024 that put us behind, and so I do apologize for that. That said, the title of the claim is "The Future Begins Today," and we're gonna get into what that means. But first, for those of you who don't know, if you can go ahead and move that forward, a little bit of background on the Development Consortium to kind of tell you what we do. We were founded in 2006, my partner and I founded it, and we do site selection and incentive negotiation for companies. We do a lot of Illinois enterprise zone work, and we work from Lake County down to Metro East, border to border. Um, the site selection stuff is all throughout the Midwest. We do these economic development plans like this, we do operational management consulting for generally non-for-profit organizations, and we also have a nonprofit that we run called Elevate Illinois Language, which is just getting off the ground. And we also do, um, run the Edgar Fellows Program for former Governor Edgar, somebody who may know that name, um, to kind of bring people from all different backgrounds together to try to get them to work well together, which is always interesting. Go ahead. A little bit of background on both of us, just so you know, um, our economic development background, my business partner started out as a dance for Governor Edgar, worked in communications, free communications for Ag, went to DECA, which is Department of Commerce and Community Affairs, the predecessor entity to DCEO, of course, he was an area development rep. And when she left there, we formed TDC, and she became the head of Renewal Ween under contract for this new thing in downtown Ween. They've done a lot of things with their convention center, their restaurants, their hotels, the new bridge, all that kind of stuff, that all ran through Janet's office. My particular role in economic development was, started after I left Six Flags theme parks, whereas the marketing and promotions, that has a lot to do with economic development, right? It's fun, but, I mean, um, that's how to talk about roller coasters, gotta be honest. Uh, went to work for Commerce as an area rep in Southeast Illinois, ended up running the entire group, which at the time composed what is now Team Red, the area development reps, the national site location unit of the group, and the national marketing unit of the group, and proud to say that when we were there, we were number one in the country for Illinois development. So that's kind of a highlight of things that happened in state government when it worked, and I'm happy to say, regardless of political affiliation and all that, things are turning around now, and we've got aggressive people in charge of the agency, we're moving things forward. Um, excuse me. The other things that we've been involved with, um, when I left the agency, I went to work for the Economic Development Corporation, Decatur Lake County Land Intergroup for about a lot of years, formed TDC during that time period, and we were able to bring about four or five billion dollars in capex to Decatur Lake County in a really difficult economic time. And, um, during that time, also ran the foreign trade zone and administered the Illinois Enterprise Zone, and also helped rewrite the Illinois Enterprise Zone Pact, which we now consult on. Um, I tell you this not to bore you, but to give you a frame of reference for all the stuff that we worked on, and hopefully it'll help tie this all together at the end of the day when we talk about the support that we're gonna tell you. So as the mayor stated, you guys got this grant, we helped you get it on the front end, we had about a two-week turn, I think, to get that done, didn't we? And we got it done, and we worked the grant, and then started this study. And basically, what we did on the front end is we talked to Mayor and Manager and Mr. McCarthy, and kind of went over strengths and weaknesses of the community, um, talked about potential projects and opportunities that could exist in the community to move the community forward, talked to some of the challenges that exist, and then identified a group of people to talk to. We talked to about, uh, probably twenty to twenty-five local residents, a couple of you are here that we spoke with, and then we also went out to our network of national site selection consultants, people of the state that we're aware of, or that we work with, talked to Intercept Illinois briefly, uh, and to the rail providers that are in the area or familiar with the area. And then I had a family that lives here, I had friends who live here, and so we kind of cheated and went out and talked to some of them, did all this line, under the condition that we wouldn't identify who they were. So that was kind of fun. Um, the other thing that I can tell you is that, um, we thought it was important to look at the pure community research and, uh, just communities like yourselves to see what they were doing, communities living in the shadow of somebody else, like Chatham has with the Capitol. And that was kind of enlightening. We looked at all the project information that we received from you guys and from other sources to kind of compare cost estimates of what things might cost in a development scenario. We looked at your infrastructure, talked to your engineers to see what the capacities were and all that. Um, talked to your public safety people. I had the privilege of being in the fire department the day that the wreck happened on I-55. That was interesting, to say the least, for those guys in particular, but to watch how that all came together. We also evaluated commuting patterns, and what is becoming more and more important, we looked at the education, training, and worker pipeline issues, not only for Chatham, but the overall area, and I hope I'll go see how this ties back in later because it's critical to the future, not only at Chatham, but everything that everybody's working on right now. And then, um, we circle back with our partners at University of Illinois and the rural education tech, or rural education technicalists, let's say, to do the implant economic impact modeling to show what the real impact could be, both from a construction perspective, the each of these projects category, as well as from an operational impact. Move that forward. The interesting thing to me about this was, when we deal with communities, the people that we talk to are usually all over the place, in terms of their opinions, their thoughts, and everything. That's not the case here, which really kind of surprised me. The people were, the majority of the people we talked to were in agreement about the issues are, what the opportunities are, and what the challenges are. And so what we're gonna say to people, what's a good thing about Chatham? The thing that always came up was education, public safety, and quality of life. That's kind of nothing that you should be surprised at, right? You don't know that, and you see it on a regular basis. The other interesting thing that came up was the need to create a community vision. So what's that mean? It's basically, when people say Chatham, let me think of it. And a lot of people have a lot of different opinions on that, but they, they want it to be thought of as more than a suburb of Springfield. They want it to have its own identity, and I think as this goes along, you'll be able to see that that can happen. Couple of other, I guess, key points here to bring up, and I can read this all to you, but this was interesting to me too. Almost everybody mentioned the need for more restaurants, places to socialize, goods and service providers, and interestingly enough, coworking spaces. My son was someone, he lives in Springfield now, he used to work in St. Louis, they're looking for a house here. He tells me this, so to speak, and he said, you know, sometimes it would be nice to be able to just get together with people on work, just for that interaction. So it's like the legacy one and all of that, especially in private sector, not so much with the government as much as you're used to, maybe it's in the private sector. So that was kind of interesting. There was also a lot of conversation from people about the need to have primary employment opportunities here. So people want to be able to live here, work here, make a living, and contribute to the community, as opposed to driving to Springfield or Decatur or South or whatever the case may be, which I thought was also interesting. Um, the other issue, and this is not a surprise for you either, I'm sure, that was always brought up was the need for affordable housing and worker housing. And affordable housing doesn't mean low income section eight, it just means the average person who wants to come and buy a house but can't afford the mean price of property here. I mean, y'all are blessed that things are going as well as they are, right? But there is that gap in terms of affordability to some degree for a lot of people who make decent incomes but just can't quite get over that point.
What is your, what's considered affordable worker housing?
Excuse me?
In that, in your study?
That two to two-fifty range was the number that most people talked about. Apologies for my voice. So that was interesting. By the school system, I have mixed mag, and that's not a negative. To a person, people told us they thought that the school district was awesome with kids who are challenged, have learning disabilities, they're awesome with kids who have college aspirations and professional career aspirations, but it just cannot mean for the people in the, I don't know if that's true or not, that's what people told us. But what it does is it opens us, opens up possibilities and links us back around to the worker pipeline issue. There's a lot of opportunities for kids who just, they're good kids, good students, they just may not super excel, but they need to be shown what the opportunities are for job growth going forward, and that was something that was brought up by, by a lot of people. And strangely to me, first one didn't surprise me, but when people talked about models for success, they talked about Edwardsville in comparison to Chatham, and then they talked about Petersburg, and I'm like, I live there. Really? Petersburg? Well, yeah, okay, there's been a lot of things happening in Petersburg, and it's changed the dynamic of the town. But it's because people came back, who made a lot of money in the private sector and invested in the home town. That's what made it change. So just kind of put that in the back of your head. Can you do one for the next one, please? The external perceptions were not surprising either, and by external, I'm talking about people who were mainly the site selection community, but we talked to some corporate real estate people, some company people that we just kind of touched base with to see what their thoughts were. Um, they had no idea. Honestly, it's a perception-based impression, it's not based in any sort of reality. Chatham's lumped into the downstate morass in many of their views, right? So they look at Decatur, they look at Champaigner Bay, they look at Mount Vernon, but they don't see what's around beyond that. So that becomes a marketing issue, and it becomes a, back to the community vision identity issue, to try to tell them, here's what they are, here's what we have to offer. And this was kind of emblematic also. I think this is all an opportunity for you guys, especially as it relates to warehouse distribution operations and those kinds of things, that that could happen on the B-side of the interstate. One site selection guy that I talked to, he used to live in the area, he was a senior manager at DCEO, and then worked, now works for a national, international site location firm in Chicago. He said, "I cannot believe," his words are there, "it's unfathomable that people have not marketed the I-55 corridor or more for warehouse logistics operations." So you think about that, Joliet's done a great job, they're proximity to Chicago, but if you take that section between Metro East and Pontiac, not a lot there, a few things, not a lot, right? So that's something to keep in mind too, I think it's a, it's a huge opportunity, so we can learn from that. This is really boring stuff, okay? When you look at these numbers, we just wanted to clarify for you kind of what they meant. Output, employment, labor income, um, public revenues, direct, indirect, and induced investment. You want me to tell you what all those are? I just wanted to plead the devil's for you. I just wanted to plead the devil's release for you. Thank you. That's all right. It, it flies and it will support the rest of the documentation that's in the report and in the presentation, if you have. Just for reference, this is the commuting area that was identified for the purposes of this study. It's a sixty minute drive time. That is based on the local labor market area that we generated back in 2015, roughly 2013 or how, when we did the enterprise zone application for Springfield City County, because you had to identify the local labor market. That's based on community managers from IDES, the Census Bureau, and is updated on a pretty regular basis, so that's the commuting, where it is in and out of this particular area. And then we looked at the projects. So on the top there, you see the big dot, that's potential site for the big box retail west of Route Four, South Mansion Road there. Number two down there is the municipal center. Go down in the lower right corner, it's a freeway road overpass, the potential industrial park, and we threw in for grants a truck stop, because again, if you look at the road, there aren't many of them in that stretch. Williamsville, St. Louis Avenue East, you have your way far north, way far south, before you see those kinds of activities. Move on, please. So the municipal center, I think, is, is the drawing that we were given of the center. Combination municipal center and retail space concept. I think, and the people we spoke to external to Chatham think it was a really cool idea, because it helps drive home this perception of, here's who we are, this is the square in Chatham, right? You had a great opportunity here, if you pull this up, because there's an opportunity for businesses to locate there, that addresses the concerns people expressed about having more local ownership of small business, and it also gives you a more efficient operational thing. If you can change the next slide, please. And also obviously gives opportunities to businesses that are located around this facility to potentially expand. I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know. It's just a great opportunity to kind of set the anchor for what the future of the village is going to be. And it starts showing that progress has happened and that you do have a vision for what can happen. Move on forward. I'm not going to read these numbers to you. You can see another report for yourselves. It talks about direct, indirect and induced impacts. Direct are just what they say they are, right? It's the expenditures that are made. The indirect are expenditures that are made by suppliers who feed into the project and induce our household income increases as a result of the project. This is the construction phase of the project, it's pretty significant. Move on to the next screen. It's the operational impacts, which again, are pretty significant. Questions on any of that so far? I'll catch you in a minute. Okay, we can move to the next section. Next thing we looked at was the big box retail. We use Home Depot as a sample, just because it isn't here. And ideally, if you're going to be successful, it'd be nice to have something in a market that isn't here. Y'all know Home Depot's in Jacksonville, right? I go to Jacksonville, a lot of my friends go to Jacksonville, they go to Home Depot because they have stuff that we don't have here. But just for grants, we use that, it could work for a Costco or any other business like that. The numbers that we used to calculate the impacts were pulled from Home Depot's annual report. Long story short, hundred and five thousand square foot is our average new store size. Your average sales per store are about fifty-six and a half million dollars a year, and then creating around four hundred full-time jobs. And that's from Home Depot's not, right? We can move on to the next slide. The impacts of that are pretty significant. Again, this is construction impact, and then you move to the next slide, we have operational impacts, and you can start seeing the numbers ramp up. A lot of employment, a lot of spinoff through the employees into the community, into the community account. The question that I always have for people when I talk about stuff like this is, can you supply the workforce? And y'all know that better than I do at this point, everybody's having trouble hiring people, right? We hear that everywhere we go, but it's a unique opportunity, if you can pull this up. The question is, getting a high image marketing in place, who are you going to reach out to? You have property developers, and can you get the attention of the ultimate occupier of that space? Next slide, please. We just did construction impacts for this, for this proposal interchange, but I'll tell you, I think this is something that also serves as another anchor point. I talked about the fire department earlier. I followed them out of town that day, they had their sirens and stuff going. I followed them out of town that day as they tried, best as they could, to wind their way north on Main and East on Long, you know, to get to Clear Lake, Clear Lake, East Lake, thing by the police building. And I had to drive at regular speed and keep it up, not their fault, it's just the function that they meant. If they could just turn right, go a full in road, go straight over, get on the interstate, their response standards would increase dramatically. And that's just for that one accident that unfortunately happened. But think of the impact if you did that, you know, for the regular service that they provide, EMS service, the fire protection they provide, in that area, south and west and east of the village. Not to mention the fact, it opens up property for development, which is also critical. So we move to the next one. This is where we get into warehouse distribution. We took these numbers from a project that we just worked on in DeKalb, Canada. So it'd be more or less, obviously, depending on the size of the facility, but hundred thousand square foot distribution facility, twenty million dollar construction cost, ten million in HVA for thirty million dollar project, who knows what the appointment is, it depends on the automation involved, is a whole nother thing again. Logistically, this works. Question is, again, do you have the workforce? Can you work with the partners to get the workforce? And what workforce is needed? The distribution projects that we've been involved with in the last five years are more and more becoming automated. So you have the whole computer science sector, programming sector, in addition to electrical maintenance and mechanical and all that kind of stuff. Can you move on to the next, please? These impacts are also really significant. This is just the construction impact. The next slide shows you annual operating impacts. And I should clarify that these, these operational impacts are annual impacts, right? It's not one time hit, it's every year. And what tends to happen is the numbers grow exponentially, right? So just from, if you, if you look at this particular component, just from the opportunity that exists, from a site location perspective, direct access, I think, I've been told that the infrastructure can be delivered to meet the needs of a facility like this, and if you have the right client, you have rail adjacent. And we had really good conversations with the rail provider about the opportunities there, and they're excited about it as well, but it's kind of the opportunities that come by big and small, to justify the extensive extended excursion. And with the changes that have gone on, Power Plant South, any loop track, turn the train around pretty close to this, so that'd be another ninety-five acre or so, that'd encompass that loop track there. Go on to the next slide, please. These numbers that we put in here were just, the next two slides were just the construction impacts of each of the projects. You can add up the numbers, and then the next slide, the operational impacts of each of those things. And again, operational impacts. And again, the numbers are significant. As long as I've been doing this, I got to be honest with you, except for the stuff that we're going to be calculating, some of the stuff we're doing in Wilmington Normal, and then back in the day when the Joliet thing started, before warehouse distribution, the pieces that you guys have as a base foundation here are really flying under the radar, I think, in tax potential. So the question becomes, what do you do now? Right? That's not up to me. That's up to you to decide how you want to move forward. But I think once you guys are able to work with your partners well to define your vision, you start out with the municipal center. So I hope. But I encourage you, as you hear this, you know this, involve your partners, the Regional Planet Commission, Molly and her team, they're on board with us, I know that from talking to them, SSGA, Springfield City County Health Alliance, talk to Abby and Ryan if you haven't already, they'll be there for you to help market this and promote this and help guide you down that process. You can also do your own marketing, obviously, as well, if you feel like doing that. And don't hesitate, again, not, I'm sure, nothing you guys don't know, please not hesitate to reach out to your legislators, and that's at all levels. One of the things that frustrates me the most is, I have never gotten the impression this is the vibe that's going to come out of this community. One of the things that frustrates me the most is communities go, oh, I'm afraid to talk to them, I don't want to make them mad. Well, guess what? They work for you, right? And they're there to serve. And if there's a potential opportunity for growth, they're going to be there to be behind you. And I encourage you guys to do whatever you can to get that ball rolling if you haven't already, and get them on board to help fund some of this stuff from an infrastructure perspective and from an overall, long-term planning perspective. So with that, I will do that much more than I thought I would. I have to answer any questions to my end.
On the construction plans, especially listed out from the main projects, what kind of timeframe do you see those construction projects? And was that total per year or is that total per project?
The construction?
Yes.
That was a total pro project on the construction end, and then there was the operational piece, which was.
So how about timeframe in construction projects?
Depends on the size of the, size of the project, obviously, but most I don't really think you need. I mean, I don't know about that.
Yeah, not to say that that happened within.
Yeah, but. The longer we say, the longer we say we're going to break ground on all this.
Take them eighteen months from ground, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can lock you in?
No, I preface that. Chaviat.
Eighteen months today.
Oh, sure. Home Depot, right, they're coming over, they're beating us over there.
I gotta pick up some laundry.
Yeah. And feel free to continue if you'd like, we don't have a problem with that. If you have an issue with your work, I mean, I'll try to address any concerns you have.
How much property would we need for each one of those projects? Do we get that? I think it's ninety-five acres or something, I didn't know.
The Home Depot thing is really a function of the store size versus the parking departments based on the local order basis. So that's going to all follow into your master plan and piece. The same thing is true to some degree with the warehouse distribution centers. We've worked on millions worth of facilities, right? You can do math there, that's a lot of acreage, plus you've got to have a storm on your lawn, and you've got to have parking for trailers, in and out of access and all that stuff. So the acreage requirements could be significant if it's a big one. For a smaller, like hundred thousand square foot, I mean, you're going to be okay with what you've got, can identify in a preliminary, whatnot.
It's going to be better if we have that kind of line that we can develop.
It's, well, a lot of things that he's talked about here, we've done a lot of work to identify certain, like footings on several of the areas, is this why most people in town recognize the same kind of things, because some of the stuff we're doing is being measured. I don't think our elected officials would hesitate to tell you that we're in the area frequently, pretty constantly, so we appreciate hearing that. Anybody else have questions for Trey? Because he does have another meeting, so we're not voting to accept this yet, but we'll be around to ask questions when it comes back.
The one, the one thing that I would say to, I just forgot what it was.
We lost the last one.
It was the one thing.
No, we're not, no, that's, it'll come to me. Sorry about that. Questions coming up? You're full of, you know what?
So if you told, if you told Pat and I earlier, I think the very first meeting we had, you had even discussed putting together a grant application for this, did you ever tell them that, you said that normally a town like Chatham wouldn't do so many work, but, when you tell these guys, but, just like here, do you remember it?
They don't remember, honestly.
They don't remember.
Don't you?
Why don't they?
There's not a lot of projects, someone's not.
No, when we talked early with Craig, we talked about some of the stuff is, a lot of shadow towns, I like that word, shadow towns won't necessarily have a vision or won't be the kind of area that is willing to take recommendations, going to look through what these projects are, and then actually start taking these steps to do something. Didn't want to spend time on a report that was never going to generate any kind of action. And in the year that we've been working with Craig, some of these things, in there, they're progressing as the reports.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's unique when a community actually moves forward.
So you're saying that since we've taken action, that we have access to grants where we otherwise wouldn't have?
Yes.
Wonderful. We listen to experts, it's great.
Well, thanks. You guys have a great team here. I mean, I think you have that. And kind of rolled your oysters, so contact information is there, feel free to contact me offline if you'd like to call up whatever, if you have any questions you might have. And like I said, I've tied up the area as well, and my kid's probably going to live there, it's not cute, but my son is probably going to be living here, so I'll have even more investments going forward.
All right, well, thank you, Craig.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. We have no old business item, one of the new business is NORDance transferring appropriation authority between line items for the fiscal year that is wrapping up. I have a motion to bring this to the floor.
I'll make a motion.
Trusty Nice, made a motion, second by trustee Berger, Caleb on the transfers.
Yeah. Just so, just the last bit, we only added one thing, we did a final review of everything, didn't see any same major except for we ended up spending a little bit more in the parts department on structural repairs, which was offset with revenue we brought in for insurance proceeds, so that was the only change since, since we last talked about it.
Ready for any questions for Caleb, Megan or Pat? Who did refer to him anyway? Discussion, trustee Berger.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Dry.
Yes.
Item two, it is NORDance making appropriations for the corporate purposes for the fiscal year, begins on May one, twenty twenty-four, ending thirtieth of April, twenty twenty-five. A motion to bring that to the floor. Trustee Dry's made a motion, second by trustee Fletcher, total appropriation, thirty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-one thousand, thirty-four million. Wow! There's a lot of that. There's a lot of that.
No, it's probably next year.
Thirty-seven, thirty-four million. Three hundred fifty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars, two or three, right?
Yes.
Just a couple of comments on that.
As I said, we are doing this a little bit earlier than we usually do, so there are a few changes that came up between the last board meeting and now, and I wanted to make sure to be transparent about those. For the parts department, I did add some money in there for insurance. For the Parks Department, I did add some money in there for insurance and the amount of $42,000. That's just a pay their premium, their portion of their premium for workers' comp insurance and property and liability insurance. We did add the pickleball court painting expense separately in there now. So it's basically a wash. We have the amount set aside and the amount of $84,000, which I believe is the quote we received for the paint. And we also have an offset revenue of donations for $84,000 that we plan to bring in to wash that expense out. The Streets Department, an emergency storm sewer repair came up just since last, the last board meeting, and the amount of $60,000. So we wanted to make sure to get that budgeted this next year. They're going to take care of that right away as soon as May 1 hits. And then the Electric Department, we have developmental costs that we put on top of our regular costs that we budget each year for any electric materials for our infrastructure. We want to make sure and put these costs separately so that we can match those with revenue as well that we bring in from the developer to pay for those expenses. And that's the only major changes that were.
You know what she was talking about in that last one? The last one is like Fox Creek, but where we are required to put the electric in for a subdivision like that. So we asked our engineers now to design it. They did. They gave us a list of material. We gave that to our supplier, they gave us prices for those. We estimated the amount of hours it would take for us to install that equipment that we would use and then put all that together and then send that to the developer. We need payment on that before we order that, that equipment. But it gives them an idea of that part of the cost. What they'll end up doing then is getting a price for someone to install the water line, the sewer line, the sanitary sewer lines, and then the streets, and then that all becomes a cost of that plan. Then we charge them a small fee for that so that we can pay CMT to oversee it and make sure that they think right.
Any other questions for Caleb and team? Discussion?
Greg, that's one question.
Rachel.
Rachel.
No, it's not the first time ever.
You set a high bar. You set a high bar in last year.
It's, it's, it's very likely Google will not be on top of it. We have two human contracts, so we have to negotiate. It all depends how good I am at that negotiating again.
Why would I say it out loud? Mr. Fletcher, shake their hand.
Trusty Tribe.
Yes.
Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Gerger.
Yes.
Trusty Fletcher.
Yes.
Trusty Ferguson.
Yes.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Item three is an ordinance made in both liquor code and retain, and I forgot saying liquor license, in motion. Trusty Gerger's made a motion, second by Trusty Fletcher. The request is to increase the number of tavern gaming licenses by one. Frank and Shannon have made a request, an application. We cleared through their application process. And if the board is so willing to increase that number, we're in a position to issue that license in town here. So Frank and Shannon are here, if you have any questions for them.
I, I just have a comment. So I am going to be super hypocritical tonight because I am anti-gaming anymore in this village. But I cannot see you guys leave the village, so I'm going to be a yes. You guys are so important to this village and the community. And thank you for being here and trying to stay here.
We want to grow here.
Yes, and we know that.
We want to, you know, we want to just grow and keep making, making the hope.
And I think one of the concerns is that it's not going to be just our family oriented ice cream spot. It's going to be a separate, you know, or we're keeping it.
Now Dad can come make some money. I'm honored. You guys are totally 100% this community and you're what we're about as a community. You represent us well and you treat all of our kids really well and all of our families and you, you guys are great, you know.
Any other questions or discussion?
Trusty Fletcher.
Absolutely.
Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trust, Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Trusty Gerger.
Yes.
Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Tribe.
Yes.
All right, item four is a resolution to approve and accept that economic development plans, and I'm motioning to bring this to.
I'm your question.
Trusty first has made a motion, second by Trusty Charo. This completes our rights grant package with the state.
That, those projections would make us too much money, so.
It's not headache for you, we'll give you that one. Uh, it is interesting.
That was a good presentation.
Discussion regarding.
I feel the outlay, what was on there is the money coming back in the community from people actually building it, working at it. I did ask some questions about that. He had my, I didn't want to bring it up.
No, that's a great point.
The, the, the Western Illinois University piece of that, or I guess the acronym, but they're the ones who actually ran those numbers. It wasn't just kind of paste, kind of pasted for, they put segment down in there. And that's what I asked him before we got here. But again, that's where it came from, which was nice to hear, so.
That looked great.
Thorough process. Yes. We talked about some of the things that took a long time to brand all that, and I assist through the westerns, regional. The modeling that they did.
If it managed, we're going to pay the monthly bill.
Hey, we're going to go to these taco bells, come on.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. I will now entertain, but I'd like a motion to consolidate resolution 24-24 through 29-24. Into a single vote. That motion consolidating?
Yes.
Trusty Tribe's made a motion, seconded by everybody. So we're going to consider all of the appointments. We, we run through this pretty much on, pretty much on an annual basis where our, we reappoint. We have one new appointment to board, Joe Smith on the parks, which was his recommendation from our parks committee to add him. And we have one vacancy remains on.
Playing condition.
Playing condition. If you have recommendations, we're not all on the board. Certainly appreciate people are willing to spend time, understand all of it, and work on these things.
Or what spot, or do we need to do?
What expertise?
Yeah, what expertise?
None.
It's, we, we have.
Care.
That's.
Care.
Care, the care didn't really just put in some time. We have engineers, we have bankers, we have public safety, we have real estate. And then we, we span a broad spectrum, I think, so anyway.
What they do is they look at the plans that come to the sub, to town and decide whether subdivision is right for a place or business is right for a place. You know, they look at given initial zoning for any of that stuff. So their job is very, very important in our, in our overall think of.
Well, that's the one I was asking, what, what specific need we need for that? We need someone that, only person that.
Somebody that will show up that we, we meet on the third Thursday of every month, but we don't, only if we have, we need a meeting for that month. So, uh, we have a good group of people, they all like each other, see them in lawns.
Care, show up and get along.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. All those moved? We appreciate all those volunteers. I'm motioning to bring the percentage into this.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Nice, seconded by Trusty Charo. Any discussion regarding the warrants in the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk?
Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Tribe.
Yes.
Trusty Ferguson.
Yes.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Trusty Gerger.
Yes.
Trusty Fletcher.
Yes.
After waiting so patiently, Mr. Shad, all the comments on those businesses.
You picked a good one to talk to.
Hey, thank you everybody just for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I'm organizing a carnival again this year for the American Legion. It won't be Memorial Weekend this year because Carnival Amusements was worth a 20 grand for that weekend. We couldn't do this. But I think it's going to be just as good as last year, maybe a little bit bigger because Carnival Amusements have a various calendar. Big event on Memorial, Memorial Weekend is in Benell. What we had last year is essentially what they had available. And then by our event will be the San Antonio Fair. So this year it's going to be the 6th, 7th, and 8th of June, again Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thursday nights will be dog rides again, it was a big hit last year. I always say this, I had a lot of compliments last year from families because it was a good family oriented event. We have no alcohol, we have no bands, it's just a carnival. And a lot of, a lot of people really appreciated that. So the Carnival Amusements certificate of liability insurance will be reviewed May 1st. And we're going to attach the post and the village to their liability package, the same thing we did last year. And we're not yet that, but I'll go to the village, I'll go and get the necessary paperwork submitted. And hopefully by the next meeting, first one in May, resolution will be approved and that'll be that. So anyway, that's the plan. So I will be back, I'll be the first meeting in May, just to be here, just to make sure there's any questions or problems. But I'm looking forward to it. It was good and we made a lot of money last year, but not too much, but that's okay. It was just, it was a good thing for the kids. You know, when they set up last year, I thought, well, we've got a lot of rice for the kids, but we need more rice for the teenagers. But okay, I was, by the end of the third day, I was happy to call the rice for the kids. We had a lot of kids there, probably the young, little kids. And I think we'll probably be on market again and we'll have some bouncy houses on the square. And we might get a couple of extra food trucks this year, I don't know. But I'm looking forward to it. It's a good event. And it's just me and a guy named Jonathan Reese, and that's it. And all we do is empty the trash and take it over to dumpster in the Legion and sit down and just watch everybody have a good time. So I'm looking forward to it. So.
Next, next rule is board meeting with 6:00 PM on April, that's not right.
May 7?
May, April, that's the 12th, I believe.
This is May 12?
May 14th.
May 14.
May. May 14th. No one made for a closed session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Trusty Gerger made a motion, seconded by Trusty Charo, all in favor? Aye, aye, close.